Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 13th, 2013, I'm sorry. The Monday, December 16th, 2013, special meeting in the Town Board beginning at 6:01 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am Clerk, have we complied with all the requirements of the open meeting laws?
Yes, I talked to Jamie today.
Thank you. And can you call the board, please?
Brian Fisher.
Here.
Mike Laska.
Here.
Larry Wolf.
Here.
Joe Mansky.
Here.
And Chairman.
Present. And please note in the meeting minutes that Mike Laska is not present in the Town Hall. And we'll begin with citizens' comments.
Good evening. Sandy Hall, West 230, South 38, 27, Milky Way Road, in the town. I just wanted to say I'm encouraged by this meeting, by the process. I'm also encouraged by the fact that you've undertaken to move it up to today rather than later and get this job done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, and we'll move on. Current business discussion and possible action, and review of town attorney candidates, and information for possible engagement. We've got really two potential firms available, Davis &amp; Keelthaw, and Arnez, Multer, Macy, Riffle, and Larson. The K&amp;K law firm also submitted a request for proposal application today, but they are interested in only the municipal prosecutor, so would not be representing the town other than in municipal court.
I guess we wanted to get together to discuss anybody's, on the board, anyone's concerns or desires to interview either party or both parties, or now with K&amp;K, if somebody has a thought of bringing them in just to do one facet of the town's legal business. So that was, or if there was other information that people on the board wanted Brian or I to go and obtain from these parties, this was the avenue to do that. So I guess my question would be to the three, Larry Wolf, Mike Laska, and John America, there were questions or concerns or additional information that you wanted us to get, or if Brian and I should seek to establish closed-session meetings to interview the two firms or Or if we should just tee this up on an agenda and people are prepared to make a motion or decision based on the information that you have?
I think from my perspective, I can't, I don't think we should have separate law firms representing us in municipal court and then separate law firms representing the town. It probably is going to lead to duplication of services at some point. Doesn't seem like a wise choice, but I guess in municipal, you know, which is a little more than traffic court, I don't see that it's a, I don't see it's a big deal. But I think historically, the town has always been represented by the same firm, the municipal court, as well as here at Town Hall. I think either of these two firms and either of the two attorneys from Davis &amp; Keelthaw would be fine and work well with the town, but I think if you look at the resume from the firm of Arnez, Multer, Macy, Riffle, and Larson, they seem to be the gold standard for municipal attorneys, and particularly with towns, they've got thirty, four towns that they're consulting to, or have, are the municipal attorney, as well as a host of villages and cities. And I think the Macy law firm, or the Arnez, Multer, Macy, Riffle, and Larson law firm, is awful, is, their resumes are for themselves, and I think that is their interview.
I'll offer a couple of comments with regard to the first issue that was addressed, whether or not we are interested in identifying a separate lawyer or law firm to represent us as a municipal prosecutor. I haven't had much time to think about that, but I certainly don't think that that's a decision that is the decision that we need to make tonight. That may be something to consider down the road. Just looking at what is before us, and I think the town would be well-served to move ahead, I identified seven criteria that I think are important for us to consider in evaluating attorneys that would be interested in representing the town in terms of legal matters, not in any particular order, but one obviously has to be experience and qualifications. I noted that the municipal resume that we got there from Arnez, Multer, Macy, Riffle, and Larson indicates that they represent some roughly fifty to sixty municipalities. Again, many of them are towns and townships, that is their area of expertise. If you look at the qualifications of individuals, and I would note that our town ordinances actually speak to the position of town attorney as an individual rather than a firm, and that's something we may want to look at down the road, how that is couched. If you look at John Macy's personal or individual qualifications in terms of his education, membership, community involvement, and so forth, it's an incredibly long and impressive resume. It would take, if we read through that tonight, it would take us an extended period of time in order to do that. My understanding from talking to him is that John Macy, if we look favorably upon him, would be the lead attorney for their firm, and in fact would undertake personally rather than one of his fellow members of the firm to represent the town. If you look at his expertise, it's something that should even be familiar to everybody on this board because we participated in it. I think he's recognized for his expertise and knowledge in the laws that pertains to open meetings, public records. I think most of us sitting in this room, or at least on this side of the table, have attended the training sessions that he conducts for Board of Review training. Reputation, I think I've already spoken to that, I think is very good. I'm interested and concerned about the proximity, and I think an advantage of that firm is close proximity to the town here and to the Town Hall. Even though we're in an electronic age, that's a distinct advantage from my perspective. Fifth, in terms of availability, and I did talk to John Macy, he does have in his very, very busy calendar Thursday nights available, which are regular meeting nights, so he will be able to attend those personally. Familiarity, I think he is very familiar with our community and our issues. I think that's a distinct advantage. And the other criteria that I have, that obviously we need to take a look at, is affordability. We don't have it before us tonight, but I know he provided his terms of agreement, his hourly rate at $197.50 per hour, I think also indicated that he would not require a contract, would work basically at the pleasure of the Town Board without any kind of a contract. I don't know that we have comparable information on terms of engagement from Davis &amp; Keelthaw, but I identify those seven things, and I think that John Macy scores high on all of those areas.
One of the only problems I've got with Mr. Macy is some of the cities and towns he's consulted for. Now, I don't know, this is new to me, so I don't know if it's illegal to do this or what, but he's represented the city of Brookfield and the city of Waukesha, and I don't know if I'm comfortable having an attorney that has consulted with them with the two issues that we've got going on at this time with them. He's got a long list of accomplishments, I grant that, but having those two cities that he's done work for is going to be hard for me.
Well, the city of Brookfield, we have no ongoing issue with, that I'm aware of, that the former issue that we had was with the town of Brookfield.
Okay, you're right, you're right.
The city of Waukesha, the Macy firm had consulted the city of Waukesha in previous times in various matters, just like we had a representative from Corello Carlson here representing the town of Waukesha. They're not, they are not, and have never been, the city attorney for the city of Waukesha. One other piece of expertise that the Macy firm brings to the table is the incorporation for the village of Pewaki. The Macy firm led that and was successful in doing that, and if the town of Waukesha is ever endeavors to do that, it would be helpful to have a firm that was, had the only successful incorporation in the state of Wisconsin in many, many years.
If I could just hitchhike on that, that is my understanding as well, that basically they were involved in the incorporation effort for the city of Pewaki, which basically sealed the city of Waukesha's border to the north. I think that's an added plus. The other thing that John Macy represented to me, and I asked him about his involvement in consultation with the city, and he indicated from time to time they have been involved in representations with issues that involve city police and fire commission, and I think some of their, I hesitate to call them disciplinary, but when they have had personnel-related issues with the police and fire commission, that they have made representations in those regards. I think where the city necessarily has, had to go outside of its regular circle for legal consultation. So I look at those experience kind of things as a plus rather than a minus.
So is any member of the board interested in a meeting with these two individuals, or the interview of sorts, or additional information?
I guess that these are the only three we have. I would think it would be smart to get all three of them in here.
Oh, it's really two because K&amp;K is only looking for...
No, yeah, but there's two different from Dave.
They're just, just like Aaronson and them listing Stan Riffle and everybody.
Oh, okay.
Listing attorney number two from the same firm.
Okay.
But Christopher Jakels is the...
Would be the main.
That would be the Hector DeLamora.
Okay.
Chris Skinkie, Doug Hofer would be the other.
Oh.
Might be the agent that he sends to municipal court. That'd be a fair question to ask him if you want to meet. I've not met him personally, so.
I guess from my perspective, if you've got, I don't know that we need to reinvent the wheel. If you've got the firm that is the gold standard for representing municipalities, and they come with an incredible abundance of experience, some of the issues and the problems that we face have already been faced by other towns. Some of those towns are represented by this firm, by the Arnez, Multer, Macy, Riffle, Larson firm. They've already got the answer right off the top, right at the tip of their tongue. I don't know why we would look at any other firm other than Arnold, Multer, Macy, Riffle, unless they came with a resume that was equal to this.
Point.
Yes.
And I agree with that also. I'm not ready to give one person, even with a resume like this, the job without interviewing more than one person.
I guess I have a question then for Supervisor Laska and Supervisor Wolf, and respect your opinion. Maybe you could outline for us, what is it that you are looking for that you would consider to be valuable considerations when we look at this process? What, can you tell me what you're looking for?
I'm not looking for anything specific. I'm looking for face-to-face, the guy could have this resume and be a jerk, and I won't, I don't think he would make a good fit for the town. I'm not calling him that, I'm just saying, just because he's got a super resume doesn't make him a workable person for our team, where the other, the Davis, he may not have as big a one, he's represented villages, so he has worked with small communities. I just don't think it's right to hire one person without, when we've got two people to interview. I think we need to do the job and interview them and find out which one's a better fit for us.
Larry, he does have a little bit of municipal experience. On his resume, he lists three, Iron County, the village of Bayside, and the village of Whitefish Bay. I think any of these attorneys will tell you there's a big difference between town law and village and city law, and that's one of the problems that we've run into with our past representation, is not understanding the difference between town law and city or village law. If regarding Mr. Macy and the potential of him being a jerk, he's not working with the contract. If we dislike him, we replace him, number one. Number two, I would argue that if he was a jerk, he wouldn't be representing fifty or sixty municipalities, they wouldn't put up with it.
Right, but he may not be a fit for us. That's all I'm saying.
He may not be a fit, that's correct. What would you, what would disqualify him in your mind?
I wouldn't know without meeting him.
Okay. You have met him, he's been at town association meetings that you've been at.
Yeah, but I have not gone up and talked to him. He's instructed some of the classes I've gone to. Like Mr. Fisher said, he did the Board of Review training. He was very knowledgeable, but I have not personally met him or had a conversation personally with him.
My offering of, my desire to meet them is one very big question that comes up. There are thirty-five municipalities, just municipalities, not counting any sanitary district or other representative client that they've listed here. They have five, what I can see is, five attorneys, and they have thirty-five listed municipalities. How do they, how do they provide us a level of service? If you have thirty-five municipalities and you have five days of the week, I hear you saying that there's a chance that Mr. Macy may be our personal attorney? No, not a chance. Not a chance?
He would be.
Okay.
No chance.
So how does he then deal with conflicts that may arise in the Town Board? How does he deal with conflicts that may arise in the town of Genesee, town of Eagle, village of North Prairie? These are all municipalities that we do have either borders with or relationships with, whether that's through municipal fighter services, which I think is something that will need to be reviewed and potentially expanded upon in the way that some of our equipment stuff is used and purchased, and that's a big concern for me. This municipality ran into a problem with the prior law firm from Mr. Hammons leaving the town, what I would ver pie and dry, with one week notice while he went on vacation for a week with regard to the incorporation efforts of Brookfield, and I think we should be paying attention to one of the, one of the issues that I'm concerned about is, what about that with the Town Boarding? What about that with some of those conflicts? How are they going to address that? To say that one of their other attorneys will simply step in, Mr. Riffle did step in in the town of Waukesha discussions with the town of Brookfield, and I remember that was quite a hostile relationship while they were here. So that's a secondary concern that I have with the firm, and specifically if John is going to hand off to somebody, you know, I wouldn't be interested in that hostility revisiting this issue because that became what looked like to me, as I sat in the audience, as a political disagreement between Party A and Party B, and Party B was getting poked, and he was a supervisor, and I didn't appreciate that when I was a resident out there watching it. So I have some concerns that I'd like to kind of hear about. I've never met Mr. Jakels. He seems like an intelligent guy, does have some municipal experience. Might be questions I'd like to hear from him as far as what about the limitation of him only representing villages? How does he view a challenge of taking out a town? Does he view it as a challenge at all, or does he, does he not? There isn't some great divide between a village and a town that isn't pretty easily obtained with clarity for a attorney to grab. So I don't think that that's a big hang-up. Again, this is a resume with, you know, school districts, technical colleges, water utilities, towns, villages, cities that he's consulted, and it's a impressive resume that does not make, the resume by itself does not make that the right choice, and my concerns are things that, Brian, you've taken the time to talk with John, and John, I'm assuming you talked to John prior, earlier in the year? You know, I have not reached out and made that contact.
I didn't talk to him earlier in the year.
No, I, I said...
Don't make that assumption.
I didn't, I said, I'm assuming you talked with him, and I said, John, I assumed you talked to John earlier in the year.
I did not.
So I'm not making that assumption, I'm just saying, right, he did. I'm assuming this.
Right.
You know, and I think it's appropriate, you know, I'd spoken with Chris, took him his information to present it to the board. I've not had additional conversation with him since he provided that information and said he was interested in the position. I think that was the appropriate step for me to take, and now I'm saying to you, you as a full, these are the two people. I've got questions for them. I'd like to have a discussion, but, so I would be unprepared and unwilling, not unprepared necessarily, unwilling to award a position to one of these two individuals this evening. I would like to have an opportunity to have a discussion with them of my concerns.
What concerns? I want to clarify a couple of things. First, Joe, the Hammons Law Firm did not leave us high and dry. The town of Waukesha had a letter of engagement on January 19th of 2011 from the DeLamora Law Firm, long before the Hammons Law Firm submitted their, tendered their resignation. So they did not, in any way, shape, or form, leave us high and dry, so that's, that's not accurate.
It is accurate. I was here, I was on the board, they gave us a one-week notice, they faxed it over on a Friday afternoon, and then they went on vacation. If you want to rehash these old things and make political gestures about them, we can. I prefer not to, because I was here, I know what they did, I know how the fax came over, I know how phone calls were made to follow up, and I know that the responses were that he went on vacation for the week, and he gave exactly a one-week notice. He faxed it over and went on vacation with a one-week notice. That's high and dry.
Did you already have a letter of engagement from DeLamora Law Firm?
Not to my knowledge, no.
I have it for you, if you'd like a copy, it was dated January 19th, 2011. So we were not left high and dry, that was already in the works, Mr. Hammons. Next, what concerns do you have that you'd like to address, and, you know, would you, I mean, are you looking for an interview? What do you want to do? Because I would like to get this done long before Jamie leaves, so that we had a town attorney that was aware of the happenings in the town.
If the other board members wish to talk to one or both of the individuals, I think it is best done altogether, if, because now we're starting to impose on their time. If each one of us calls and takes fifteen or thirty minutes to go through that with them, talking about a two-hour adventure into their life, you know, if nobody else wants to talk to them, heck, I'll pick up the phone, call them both, and move on. But if other board members would like to, I think it's appropriate that we all hear the same answers and all get that information. That's me.
So Joe, are you saying not to have them here in person and interview them, or interview them individual?
If. If. A majority of us want to talk to these guys and have similar questions, or want to hear those same answers, that questions that have popped up, then I think we should schedule a closed-session meeting with them and have those question-and-answer formats.
Why a closed session?
I support that it would be a closed session, because I think that those are not, for my liking, I think that those are service negotiations, and I don't necessarily think we should be asking Mr. Macy necessarily about the issue of Stan Riffle and the previous supervisor as a public matter, to hear his answer about that. He may not want to answer in a public session. Maybe Davis &amp; Colthow does not want to reveal some reason that they don't have a town on here and it could harm them, so maybe they want to avoid that discussion. I don't know if that's in reality for them, but I think we're asking them to disclose information that would be competitive to their business and give us the pros and cons of what they were doing on top of potentially contractual negotiations. I mean, Mr. Riffle says, or Mr. Macy, excuse me, says, we don't want to have a contract. Well, a contract is a document that protects both parties. We may want to spin it that it's a positive that we don't have a contract, but I would say that that might be a negative as well, because how do you know what's... say that that might be a negative as well, because how do you know what services you're going to expect and when to expect them, and at what level, and at what pay rate? You know, a contract protects the town in lots of ways, as well as it does buying the town. So, you know, we may be negotiating a contract at that point, which is a valid reason for having a closed session in those negotiations. About the rates, their, their costs, you know, preparation for town meetings might cost, you know, how the clerk interacts with them, those can be competitive advantages that one firm may have over the other, and that's why I would do it in a closed session. It's not to keep public from anything, it is ultimately, the public's going to hear the vote and the reasons that we take those positions. But I think we may want to provide some level of confidentiality for the firm that does not get selected, in my reasoning, so that's one.
I have no interest in holding secret meetings, other than for town personnel meetings. You guys want to do that, you're going to do it, I understand that, but I have no, no interest in secret meetings whatsoever. There is no negotiations with Macy Law Firm, they have, they have a set price, and that's their price, and it's not negotiable. Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, I, I too would prefer to do this in an open session, and I guess I have a question for you, Joe. Did we have a contract with Attorney De Lamaran?
What do you want to call that letter? The engagement?
I'm asking you, did we have a contract?
I'm not going to play games with the legal definition of what a contract is, so I'm not going to answer that.
Okay. Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, I've got, um, you want to do this in an open meeting. How many people go in for a job interview? You have, my son just went on an interview for a fire department. They hold them closed without the other person sitting in the room. How can you have somebody come in here? Say we had five attorneys, they're all sitting, and, and the first one's going to get up and speak, and by the time the fifth one speaks, how do you do that in an open session?
We don't have five, we have two.
Okay.
And your son did not apply for town attorney for a municipal, to, to represent a municipality.
Okay, how many inter...
Completely different thing.
No, it isn't. How many interviews have you gone on in your lifetime where you've been sitting in a room with the other prospects doing your interview?
I haven't been on an interview in at least thirty years, and I couldn't answer that question.
That's not what I asked you. Have you ever been on an interview where you sat in a room with another interviewee to get a job?
Not that I recall. So what do you want to do? Do you want to, are you looking to make a motion to try and get both of these folks in here? I have no interest in a closed session, I want to put that on the record and put that out there. I don't like secret meetings, and that's exactly what you guys did. You had over eighty of them in the last, previous board, and I think it's the wrong thing to do. I think you should disseminate this information openly to the public. Yes, Mr. Laska?
I motion that we request the clerk to find out a convenient time for our two firms, let aside these times, to interview these two firms.
Open or closed session?
Close, of course.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Laska? Supervisor Laska?
What?
Yes.
Your vote?
Yes, he said yes.
Oh, okay. Supervisor Wolf?
Yes.
Supervisor Vansky?
Yes.
Chairman Merrick?
No.
Motion carries. Motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Satak?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you need anybody?
I see a mic.
Thank you, Larry.
Welcome, Mike.
Are you there yet?
I'm in the back, I would like to be swat, so...